So, welcome to the Town Meeting Study Committee Experiences Subcommittee. I'm Eric Moore. I'm the Chair of the Town Meeting Study Committee. Shannon, thank you for getting us set up. I'm going to move into first asking if anyone would volunteer to take to clerk today. I can do it. I have a technique in mind, but if anybody else would like to do it, I'd welcome that as well.
I would normally volunteer, but I have to leave at around three o'clock today, so I don't want to leave you hanging for the second half, so apologies.
Fair enough. Thank you. I think I'll do it. I'm actually going to do something to make it more efficient, I hope, and so hopefully that I can share that with the team as well. So I'm clerking today. I will take role then. I guess the custom has been to just say your name when I call it, please. The names in dark are the folks that I was expecting today, so to speak, for the Experiences Subcommittee. Phil, I see you as well. Thank you. But let's just do role. Katie Bresnik?
I, this is Katie Bresnik.
Thank you. Kristen Hagerty?
Kristen is here.
Hey, thank you. Alice Kaufman? Yeah, got you, Alice. I can see you saying something, so I think that qualifies. And Phil Swain, I see you as well. Thank you for joining. Thank you. And Eric Moore on here as well. Moving forward. So our agenda today, the normal public comment. I don't believe that we have, well, actually, we don't have a quorum, do we? We do have a quorum, but we don't have meeting minutes to approve. I think I'm the person with minutes outstanding right now from the July 2 meeting. Chair's remarks. I'll talk a little bit about my conversation with Celeste Katz-Marston from the Bridge. We'll discuss what we've seen so far from some of the different studies from different towns on voter participation, representation. We'll talk about questions, information seeking through either some data analysis or through the survey. And, you know, Katie, we'll be sure to wrap that up before you need to go. And I think the question as well as the ideal town meeting. And if there's anything else that surfaces that we want to talk about, we'll do that. So moving into public comment. We do have a member of the public today. Is there anyone who would like to, anyone who would like to offer anything today during the public comment period?
Thank you. No, Eric. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, David. Okay. So, yeah, so my conversation with Celeste Katz-Marston from the Bridge, this was on Friday, the 5th. I was, you know, I was like, oh, my God, I'm going to talk to some people in the media. That was a really good conversation. I think I prepared for it, right? So I had things to say. I think it was relatively organized. I will say that my experience of the conversation was that the person I was talking with was really engaged, asked very insightful questions. And, and, you know, I wanted to feel pretty comfortable in the conversation. Hopefully I didn't, you know, I hopefully wasn't pedantic, and I certainly didn't try to bullshit. So it went really, it was really interesting for me. And I felt good about it, but we'll see what, you know, overall, what, you know, what the takeaways will be. The thing that I was kind of prompted with was to convey readers of, you know, what your work is, what you think the challenges are, and how you propose to address them. And so I talked about our process, where we are in our process. And I think that I wanted to share this particular chunk of text, which I won't read, which is just to say that, that I think articulating a challenge, one of the challenges for us is, is to sort of make things shorter, to do the work that we need to do and not break anything. And Alice, I respect your comment from earlier. Maybe we need to break something. But I think it's that we want to be also very aware of what we're breaking, if we are breaking something. And then in terms of topics that emerged, these were some of the, these were the topic areas related to some of the questions that, that she asked, Celeste asked. And, you know, we talked about what we know and what we don't know. And I think I think what was helpful for me was that the things that she found worth asking about are also things that we're thinking about. And I didn't find that there were things that she was asking about that we were like, what? You know, so, so that was good. And again, these are things that were kind of top of mind for her. And I'm not going to dive into that now, but one thing, just in terms of how, you know, what we might expect to see in the Bridge of our work is that, you know, she said, look, you know, we can't cover every meeting. That, that themes, whatever themes are, are more more applicable to the kind of what they're trying to do in terms of engaging their audience. So, so, but as we develop more work and more questions to explore, and as we come up with proposals for hearings and whatnot, certainly she welcomed hearing more from us and keeping in touch. So from that perspective, it was all good. I think we have, any, any comments for anybody? Yeah, Alice?
I feel, I have to just full disclosure here. For those who don't know, I was, I am one of the founders of the Conquer Bridge, and I'm still very engaged as President of the organization that runs the Bridge. Just to be absolutely clear, the Conquer Bridge has a fairly strong, a very well-constructed firewall between the editorial team of the Bridge and my role in any of, any of the board members' roles. I do not influence in any way the content of the Bridge. I can tell you guys how you might pitch a story, but I can't do that for you, and I cannot bring it to the Bridge, other than, you know, being an ordinary citizen, bringing an idea to, to the Bridge. But I have a long career in communications, and I'm willing to take, you know, help this organization think about how we communicate all the way through in this project. But I just wanted you all to know that my limitations of my role with Conquer Bridge.
Good. Alice, thank you for making that clear. Good. Thank you. Any other comments before we move forward?
Maybe just one comment. Just appreciating you having this conversation. I think this is a really good way to get what we're doing out there, and I'm sure it was challenging, given maybe a first media experience. So I appreciate you doing it and looking forward to seeing the article come out.
Thank you. Thank you. See what happens. Okay, moving forward. So, studies. So, looking at the Concord data sets available and some that I'm not sure that we have access to, this is what I've seen. There's a few things right there on the website. I did email Kari, the clerk. Kari Tarn? Kari, the, Kari Tarn, the clerk, right before, right before the fourth break. So my guess is that she's still getting through, you know, through vacation email. But I expect that we'll hear back from her in due course. I think the thing that is not clear as to whether or not we'll be able to get access to household census data in particular. I recognize it categorically could, you know, it's personally identifying information. So categorically, it could be pretty sensitive for us to get access to it. But, you know, I thought I'd ask. And that's the conquered stuff. And then, you know, we're aware of, I think, you know, we're aware of, I know Katie certainly, you know, we're aware of certain, you know, what other towns have done. These are some of the things that stood out for me in terms of reporting. You know, certainly the Andover study was rigorous in some respects. The Sharon has good data, has interesting results. One of the things that they, they point to is this paper by Roheiser and Seiz. And I need to go back and read it carefully. But that probably is the best, the most rigorous analysis of representation. And Lincoln is part of their study sample. And then there are a few other things to, as points of reference. Just to pause, are there other sources that, that we're aware of, that we want to be paying attention to? I'm not saying this is the world, just in looking around, trying to understand what's been done. This is what stood out for me. Oh, yeah, Katie. Thank you.
I just, I was looking at the voter statistics available on the Concord webpage, which may tie into what you had on the previous slide. But did see they had some, like, the age distribution of voters in a presidential election, and those who attended town meeting up until 2013. I'm not sure if they have more current data than that, but I think that allows some insights into the representation, at least by age, of those who attend town meeting versus the general voting pool, assuming where, you know, the highest amount might be a presidential election turnout. So I think that'll, hopefully it'll get back to us and have some insight into what might be available to the current date.
Um, thank you. I don't have that top of, like, so what's the skew look like? I mean, what's, how big is the difference in terms of distributions?
Yes. The town meeting attendees are older than the general electorate turning out for a presidential election. I'm looking at on my other screen here, just with the numbers. It's hard to compare, but I can always send those out to attach to the next meeting, if that's helpful.
It's a publicly available URL, so it's okay for you to just send that out if it's something you want to bring to our attention.
Yep, sure. Yeah, it's hard to compare with how it is, so I might do some analysis to kind of show what the distribution actually looks like, like the percentage falling in each category, which will help us compare a little bit more easily.
Sure, that would be great. I think the question is, is there an argument for trying to bring that up to date with the 2020 census?
Yeah, I'm sure. My guess is it's probably similar, but it's hard to say for sure.
Did I hear you correctly? You said that you, you were kind of looking at the demographics of the voters?
The percentage of people who voted in a presidential election by age category, and the percentage of people who attended town meeting by age category.
Okay, thank you. But not necessarily against the registered voters, correct?
Correct. So the, I guess, the, yeah, it does say the percent out of the total registered voters is the percent that's displayed. So we could probably back calculate to what that actually looks like. But
And the only reason I'm curious is because I, you know, understand that our population age is skewing older. But I think that's interesting about the, the voting. So we'll just want to kind of look at what, we'll just make sure we, we explain what we're presenting. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, good. Thank you. So moving forward then. So, yeah, so here's the question, though, right? And I think, Katie, you just sort of addressed it, but so what the studies are saying in general, right, participation is around 5%. We know it spikes with certain issues. Andover actually had a little, little framework for saying, identifying the kinds of issues that drive, drive participation. You know, we, we know that, that within the, within any meeting, you know, there are folks who there were regulars, there are folks who there, maybe there because of their, their issue activated. And there are folks who haven't really been to town meeting before. And so and then, yeah, obviously for many, in terms of the surveys that we've seen across different, across different towns, town meeting just seems too long to participate, and we don't know why exactly. So the Roheiser and Seiz study talked about this, this prevalence of older voters and, you know, homeowners as well showing up, you know, predominating, I guess it's the right word, in town meeting. And therefore, you know, in effect, having more, 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 more impact, right? But I guess the question, you know, thinking about the data analysis that we might be doing is, is well, two things, right? You know, so, so what about the participation rate, you know, the participation distribution? So what about, so what about that? So what if older voters tend to show up more? Does that change the outcomes in some meaningful way in terms of the judgments that are being made at meeting? I have no idea, right? That's a counterfactual question. But I think, you know, it's a so what question. And, you know, is it, does it matter because it looks weird, you know? Or does it matter because policies are really different? I don't know how to answer that question, but that to me is the a core question. And then, you know, of course, it's, yeah, Katie, one other thought. And, you know, the other question is, what do we, what do we not know that we should? Now use that as a segue into the next section, but Katie, please.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've been thinking about that a lot as well, and I, I think, like, it's quite likely we won't have data to be able to say whether the people at the meeting are representative in, in a way that, you know, the most expansive definition, let's say, with race, ethnicity, family structure, let's say, and a bunch of different variables. But I think probably what it comes down to is, are the opinions representative for those who attend versus those who don't attend. And maybe a way of getting at that is, is through a broader survey to understand whether people who are and are not attending feel that the decisions that are made represent their points of view or not. Probably thinking about that in a little bit more of a scientific way, but I think that probably is what, what might ultimately matter, but we'll look forward to hearing other people's thoughts as well.
Oh, that makes sense to me. I think it's almost a question that surveys, you know, of, of these five issues that were decided at a town meeting, right, you know, over the last three years or whatever. Do you agree with them? You know, do you, do you agree with the outcomes, or do you, do you take issue with that? But that's a, it's a, that's a squishy question, too, right? I'm not sure how to really design a question that is, 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 is robustly designed for that kind of counterfactual thing. But, but I, I see your, you know, yeah, right. It's coming back to, to attitudes. Okay, moving forward. Just an opportunity for a comment or question at this point before I move to the next section. Anybody? All good? Thank you. So questions then, participation, representation, engagement. David, did you have a question?
I apologize. I'm too damn slow with the
That's okay.
I do apologize. Something that Katie will lead us to, inevitably, just to underline, when those surveys do go out there, there's obviously a need for them to be quote "scientific," and Katie will be able to guide us completely on what that is. Instead of getting folks who are dissatisfied with town meeting, folks who are satisfied with town meeting, but across the board, kind of obvious point, I said, Katie will get us there. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. No pressure, Katie. Moving forward.
I appreciate your confidence.
The survey design is tough, actually. I, I think we'll have to talk a lot more about that. So I was thinking about, in my Broadway, right, what are some of the things that we'd like to understand, right? So, so is town meeting representative enough to be credible? Especially to folks who aren't happy with outcomes. And, you know, that, that, again, there's this really squishy concept of what representative is. A second question is the, you know, the challenge, I suppose, is the premise that demographic similarity predicts judgment. In other words, you know, if I'm a school-aged parent or I'm a retiree, is there a big difference in terms of how, how I'm voting on issues? And, and, you know, in truth, I think I was talking with a retired legislator who said that Concord, you know, is, is, in their perspective, really kind of three, three bodies, as it were. School age, you know, parents of school-aged children, the parents, as it were, the retirees, you know, who, who are effectively on fixed income. And then this middle group of, of, you could call it empty nesters, and those are the folks who tend, for the most part, to predominate our involvement and, and boards and public, public, public. So it's not just that. But, you know, the, those, those big populations have different concerns. But to what degree does demographic similarity predict judgment, right? Because when we think about representation, again, it's more if these folks are showing up versus those folks, it's going to make a big difference in outcomes. And is that difference in participation important for us to be concerned with? Another question is, you know, is, is we've talked about this, right? Are there barriers to participating in town meeting? Or is it just a matter of choice in your construction of opportunity cost? And we're thinking about that. I think what is lost, you know, what is lost to you, the voter, by not engaging? And, and, you know, the flip side of that is, what are the benefits of engaging in town meeting? When, you know, when we talk about the, the experience of being at town meeting and feeling really connected to your community, feeling a little bit proud of Concord, you know, seeing people that you know, you know, I'm not going to go so far as to go, look, you know, you'll live longer if you go to town meeting, you know, but, but again, you know, are there, are there ways to sort of identify and measure, you know, losses or benefits to engagement? And then finally, what's the effect of being in the room together? When we think about remote town meeting, where, you know, we're all on Zoom, you know, or at least it's hybrid, and there's a big chunk of us in Zoom, versus actually being in the room together, and that effect that, that, that that can have, reading the room quote unquote, is there an effect upon the kind of judgments that we make? So these are hard questions, right? These are very squishy. But when I think about trying to understand the fundamentals of what's going on with town meeting and what drives people's experiences, these are things that came to mind for me, all by way of framing. So more concretely, to understand participation, and this, this, this was in the slides that the version that Shannon sent out this morning, which I sort of dropped in her last minute, so my apologies for that. If I think about sort of, you know, if we have the data, what would be interesting, right, is to look at turnout across towns, and it's top, Concord's turnout typical for town meeting. Turnout by, by, across different elections, right? In particular, has in-person voting made a difference in terms of town and state elections? Because in-person, you know, the, the relaxation in-person voting, is that might tell us something about remote town meeting participation, potentially. You know, again, identifying, you know, what issues get turnout. I think we know a lot about this already, even based upon what Andover's talked about. And if you look at the timeline of turnout from what the clerk has produced, you know, the signature events are also marked out. So that could be pretty easy, but I think understanding, predicting when we're going to get more turnout for given issue is an important question for us, I think. And then finally, the demographic stuff, you know, does, does where I live in town make a difference in, in participation? Is my neighborhood well-represented at town meeting? And this is the, when we get into that, I think, you know, we're really going to be talking about what demographic criteria we're trying to assess through a survey. Because my guess is that we're going to be limited as to what we can do with data from the town. I'm just going to pause and see, Katie, if you have any comments at this stage.
No real comments. Maybe just a clarification. Wanted to thank David for digging out the Andover report and the specific part where they did look at representation. And what they looked at in their analysis was neighborhood and found that their town meeting was representative by neighborhood. So my guess is the distribution of people living in the different neighborhoods was similar to those that attend the town meeting. I don't think they were able to do anything by demographics, so I think it will be up to our discussion of how we want to define representation, or how we think that's important moving forward.
Good. Thank you. And just to follow up with that. Representation, looking at characteristics of participants, as, as in terms of what you were just talking about from earlier, earlier Concord, 10 years ago or so. Who's, who's showing up, who's not showing up? And how do they skew, as it were? And we can look at different dimensions, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. I think this next one is a kind of a weird question, but if we did have a representative town meeting, right, we would have districts, as it were. And we would need somehow to design what the district would be like. It's not, we have, what, three, three or four precincts in Concord? So I can't imagine that those coarse-grained precincts, five, that, that those coarse-grained precincts would be adequate for, for, you know, partitioning the, the town into representative districts. And so my question, and this is a very wonky question, is if we did have, using some criteria, it could be age distribution, could be something else, right? If we did have a, a districting plan for Concord, and then we look at our actual participation relative to this ideal representation, you know, what are we actually seeing? How skewed are we that way? And this depends upon a few things, having that data, but that would be, I think, the, the most rigorous way of looking at representation, a rigorous way of looking at representation. I'm just going to keep going. So, so what attributes are we talking about? Right? In terms of getting people out, you're characterizing the issues that are before the meeting. I think, I'm thinking in terms of opportunity cost as a way of thinking about why people don't engage. If I have to take care of my kid, instead of coming to meeting, that opportunity cost is high, for example. And then this is another squishy one, civic posture, right? Do I feel an obligation to participate in civic things? Do I look at government simply, you know, am I, is, is, is government simply a service provider and I'm a customer, so to speak? Some people have that attitude. Do I feel like I belong to Concord, or, or, or do I feel an identification with Concord as a, as a, as a community? So, so what measures, what proxies tell us these things? I don't know. But, but when I think about things that help us characterize participation or non-participation, these surface for me. And then as well, in terms of representation, you know, civil identity, you know, if, if, you know, where I go to church actually can have an impact on, on maybe how I think about town, town politics or, or town policy. If I go to the, it's the golf club, there's a golf club, you know, and, and so on, right? So, so, and then the demographics in terms of age, life stage. I don't know if it makes sense to think about wealth or income, but when we think about opportunity cost, again, if, you know, two working parents have a higher opportunity cost for getting to town meeting than, than, than someone who's a retiree, perhaps. And then finally, location, which again, proxies and stuff. So, so, and the, the discussion question really is, you know, what's in or not in the data that's available to us? And then, you know, what can we ask in a survey? So clearly, there's a lot of demographic and identity stuff we can ask in a survey. But I think going into the survey design, this sort of census, just sort of the dimensions of information that we're looking for, I think is helpful. And again, let me pause and see what people think.
This is, this is fabulous, because, you know, like, it's interesting, I'm a data person, so I wanted to have, like, really objective ways to evaluate stuff. And now, and I'm wondering, like, okay, we might evaluate everything and still end up in the same place, but that's okay, because the, the exercise of doing this is excellent. So all of this is, is very helpful. I know we kind of go in broad, and then we'll, we'll focus in. One of the things that I found in my research was the Civic Index. Is anybody familiar with this? It's from the National Civic League, but they actually have a sample survey for the town. So the Civic Index is supposed to measure civic capital, the formal and informal relationships, networks, and capacities that enable communities to solve problems and thrive. And I can send out the link in another, you know, in the future, but I, I guess my question is, because we're talking about surveys and things like that, it's an interesting, it's a self-assessment, and maybe you do it with different boards or things like that, but it has it has things about how engaged your residents are, how inclusive your community leadership is, collaborative institutions, embracing diversity and equity, authentic communication. So like, I feel like it has a lot of the, it has some good questions, and it's all self-evaluation, you know, so. And it would be interesting to see where the breakdown is, like, so let's say you ask the select board to do this. Let's say you asked, you know, a, a parent-teacher group to do it, or whatever, like, I wonder how people view our town in terms of civic engagement, and if, if it changes based on the demographic. I, I'm only mentioning it because it's, it seems like an interesting tool. We have, like, all these questions we're trying to ask. You know, is there a way we might be able to use some already formulated questions? I don't know exactly how, but just wanted to kind of plant that seed. It's called the Civic Index. The last report came out in 2019. It looks like they do it every five years, but at the end, they have a, you know, three or four-page self-assessment survey that towns can do. And then in, within this also, they had, like, case studies of, like, here's what worked well, and Somerville, Mass. is, is in there often and things like that. But Civic Index, just thinking about these questions that you have are so good. And I'm just trying to think about how we can one, I, I agree on, you know, what, what things within our kind of town governance, just even agreeing on kind of where the, where we're heading, like the vision even.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Let me just, just check in with you, Katie. I think
No, I appreciate Kristen's comment. Yeah, I mean, I think there's just so many broad things to ask about that I think it'll be really defining what we want to learn, to figure out what questions we need to ask to learn those things, because I think there's so much we want to learn from the people, and I guess the data that we'd like to see. But this is really, I think, a great starting point, a lot of things to think about.
Thank you. Let me ask the question. What do we prioritize? I think we're expecting to get a survey out. I think we're expecting it a survey out in September, uh, by the end of September. We haven't talked about, um, how to get that out in front of people. I, I think there, there, you know, there's some ideas, right? But I think that, that's a big question. I'm less worried about how we're going to host the survey and how we're going to analyze the survey. Then maybe I should be, but, but, um, um, but you know, as, as we know, some real work goes into the, the questions. And even, um, so I, I feel like, um, part of the work that certainly should, I think that it could take us a good, it could take us a, a few weeks, a few meetings to get the survey. To, to the point where we feel confident in that. One of the things that the Andover people talked about was this, uh, group in Lowell, uh, the U S Lowell, uh, group as well, uh, and I don't know if they're going to be a resource for us or not. But I guess the question again is where do we think we should be prioritizing? And Kristen, I'll go to you, please.
So regarding the survey, and this is kind of what we're trying to do is we really have to define, you know, what we're going to do with the survey information. Is it just a nice to know, you know, information? Is it something that we think that we're going to make changes based on it? Because I think it will change the questions that we, that we ask, um, and how we ask them. So, um, is your, is your original question, what do we prioritize in terms of, in hopes of kind of, moving our way towards kind of what we're going to use the survey data for?
Good question. Thank you. I, I think, uh, one piece of it is in terms of, in terms of what analysis we tried to do in the near term, around participation, around, around representation. What do we try to do? Uh, and I think, you know, the, uh, uh, the, what Katie raised in terms of the study, the Concord study from 10 years ago, that, that shows a distribution of ages and participation across the town. I, I think that, that, to, to me, it would be very useful to see whether or not there's something we could eat, we eat, we, or the clerk could bring up to date without too much effort. Cause I think that would be really, really nice to see that. And why is it useful? Um, I mean, how do we use that information? I think it speaks to, you know, any argument that we could make about the representative, representativeness or, or not representativeness of what's going on at town meeting. And I think could also point to areas we need to direct attention in terms of interventions, right? You know, but, but those are hard problems to solve, right? How do we get more parents out is a hard problem. I think that, um, we do need to spend some time, uh, thinking about what the survey, what a survey would be. Uh, and I think the question about what are we going to use the survey for? I think is, yeah, I don't know, right? I mean, what comes to mind for me is again, being able to say that we understand, uh, the dynamics of, of, of engagement here. I certainly want to use a survey to test theories about engagement and non-engagement. Though I don't have some handy ones really, I don't have some solid ones really handy. But I'd like to understand more about we, why people don't show up and what are, why are they showing, what are they thinking when they do show up? And I think a third piece of that, uh, you know, in terms of information that we would seek from a survey sooner than later, is just, you know, sort of people's attitudes around different interventions that we might make. You know, I, I, the, the caution that I have there though, is that, um, you know, again, common sense interventions, of course, we want to have remote town meeting, you know, uh, have, can have consequence, uh, unanticipated consequences. And so I don't want to like, put things in front of people to judge without again, providing a really solid pro and con to go along with that when we talk about solutions. But I think, you know, to go back, Kristen, it's a really fair question. What do we want to get out of the survey? And I, I think it's something that I would like the scoop to be clear on. Yeah, Katie?
I really appreciate this point. I think it will be important to understand what we want to get out of it, because there's so many questions we could ask and we want to be, I think, very targeted with people's time. I see this as an opportunity to test some of our recommendations and what public support there is for the things we think will be good changes for town meeting, um, which I think will lead us to what warrant articles we might want to propose for, um, the next, I guess the warrant for next year. I think there is some value in looking at representativeness for the purpose of targeting interventions, as you mentioned. But ultimately, I don't know that there's that much we can do about that, other than have a statement about what it looks like. But it will be, I think, important to understand whether people's opinions are, uh, people feel like their opinion is represented at the meeting if they don't attend.
I guess I would just add to that about the warrant articles. I think there are suggestions we can may, make that are within the scope of the moderator, the select board that don't even need, um, town meeting approval and things like that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think having some sort of like maybe evidence base be, behind our recommendations will, I think, lend support. I think especially for logistical changes too, about why we're making that change, that the public was briefed on it. Because I'm sure there will be some unhappy voices for some changes, as there always are. But to have some evidence and data to support making the change, I think will be useful.
Alice, can I just check in with you, please?
Um, I don't think I have anything to add to it. My comments would have been very similar to Kristen and Katie's about. We want to be very, very clear on what we want to get out of the survey. That will inform us on the recommendations we make to the changes we think ought to be made to town meeting based on what we hear. So pile in the sky questions maybe are interesting to have, good to know, but may not influence the long-term decision about what we can do at town meeting level. I don't want to get too big. I want to keep us focused on what we actually have to do here and make, that is to make recommendations for, um, improving town meeting. And we have, we, the problems are so similar from town to town. And when I read these studies, every community is sitting with the same set of questions. And it was the same 10 years ago and it'll be said probably 10 years from now, there'll be new and different ways that we can be addressing the same thing. But we're taking it at as of today and there are changes that we know that we can institute. And as I've said, I know that Eric and, um, and Carmen have over the years instituted many different ideas that were presented by town meeting study groups, um, to see what will work. And some work, some don't. And sometimes some of them were before, uh, ahead of their time, like clickers back in, you know, maybe five years ago, maybe that wasn't quite ready, but maybe they are now. But, so I just want to say that I started looking at this issue too, in the last couple of weeks and talking to people. Cause I wanted to understand how some of the proposed citizen petitions, um, would work. Like what was the problem they were trying to solve? Because they were not all that clear on what the problem would solve. No one has said that our actual voting takes too long. But one of the claims that town meeting takes too long, but actual voting process for most town meetings doesn't take too long. And one of the, you know, the presenter on clickers was clear to say, we'll save three and a half hours, um, of town meeting. Yeah, how? So lots, lots to learn about. Um, and we tried clickers when it was a little bit too early. Now we, data systems are stronger, cybersecurity is more of a risk, but lots to, lots to understand. So I don't, don't really want to add.
Oh, you just muted yourself.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you collecting some data? Like we're just anecdotal stuff from people?
I am starting to talk to people to say that, I started with the petitioners to understand actually what problems were they looking to solve with what they were proposing? Because obviously they had a really big concern.
Right.
Was to understand it from their perspective. Um, I am meeting with somebody from Lexington, a town meeting member in Lexington to understand why they went to representative town meeting over open town meeting and how is it working? And I'm doing a little historical research in, to the unions in the twenties and thirties and how wards and districts had been the mo, the mode for building consensus and making decisions and what.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah. Good. Thank you. So I guess as a, a point of, of, of action, then we need to think about, uh, well, what comes to mind for me is basically beginning to draft a survey. But that for each, you know, but for each chunk, you know, is to say, not, not to write the questions literally initially, but just to say, you know, why am I asking this? Right? You know, I think I want to ask this, but why am I asking this? And, and how, how are we going to use that information? I'll say one thing too about the survey is that it, it, um, seeing a survey signals that we're doing work. The survey, um, results are educational. They tell us something about what the town is thinking, you know, what we are in, across the town thinking about. And, uh, the results, so the results, results can help educate as well as inform our, our, our recommendations. And so I think the, there, you know, two ways to think about the survey. And I think we have to think about both of them in that sense. Carmen, I see your camera. So, uh, and I see your hand as well. So welcome, uh, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that, um, I've found it useful in putting surveys together to make sure that there's a narrative opportunity or an other opportunity, so that folks who feel, oh, you missed the important question, or, um, here's what I really want you to know about, have the opportunity to share that. And, um, some awfully interesting and useful stuff comes out of the narrative, uh, comments, um, sometimes. So I would, I would just encourage you to think about that.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, I'll take public comments now, if, uh, anybody has anything. David Allen, I see your hand. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, a couple of points, very quickly. First of all, to go back a bit in the conversation, the question was, uh, prioritizing. Kristen pointed out, that depends upon where you want to go, where ultimately, uh, to get to. If we go back to last week's meeting, my lead off comment made a suggestion, which, uh, is, uh, maybe, uh, a rather general proposition, but that's typically where objectives are, uh, namely, making our democracy work well. Use a word, make our democracy sing. Of course, there are many, many, many elements to that. Not to go into it at the moment. But the point is to use that as a guide for, among other things, which you're going to ask about here. Second, very quickly, as we know, I'm grizzled, hardened. Uh, I want to appreciate the slides we saw at the beginning of this segment. Oh, wow. And the discussion that we had, uh, I look forward. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm just going to comment on your T-shirt because I went to Berkeley for grad school, so.
Unfortunately, we haven't because, uh, Barbara's, uh, daughter taught there.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, David.
I get these notices, uh, when I go around town. Thanks.
Thank you. A point well taken too, as well. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move forward. Um, Katie, uh, any, any other thoughts before we move out of the data stuff, as it were?
No, I think, I think getting, understanding what data we have from the town will help us, I think, pare down what we would want to ask individuals in terms of demographics and understanding representation. But look forward to, um, seeing the, the survey come together.
Good. Yeah, we'll be talking about this a lot. So thank you. Uh, Alice, I see your hand, please.
Just a quick question. I'm wondering, are we planning on writing the survey ourselves? Or do we have the ability to hire a survey research organization to help us?
Um, we don't have.
I'm confident in Katie and Kristen, but.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't have time to do what it takes.
Yeah, I, I, to my knowledge, we don't have, we don't have a budget for a survey. There, there are a few options to us, um, getting, uh, help from, uh, uh, you know, getting help from, from someone in market research or who's done public interest survey type work. On a pro bono basis is one. I think, you know, actually between, uh, the three of us writing, writing a survey or four of us, or whatever our group is, you know, I, I have time, right? So, so I can make time for it. And I think, you know, my assumption is that we would actually write the survey and then basically use whatever judges we can to qualify the survey before going out. But I'd love to test that assumption differently. Katie, I see your hand.
Um, I was just going to say, I thought maybe also a good starting place could be looking at some of the other surveys that we've used in the past, assuming those questions were well-vetted. Um, and I'm using that as a starting place and adding subtracting altering. I have professional experience in survey development and observational research. So, um, happy to contribute, but I do have less time, uh, than I would like overall.
Yeah, I'm willing to do whatever to make efficient use of your time, Katie. So, so we'll, we'll figure that out.
And I guess one of the things I was thinking about that could be challenging is just the open meeting law in terms of collaborating on doing this. But maybe that means, you know, using one of these meetings and doing a working meeting to look at questions potentially. But it does add to the, uh, challenge of it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move forward.
Yeah, I think it would be useful to have kind of a target date, but like to start with like the objectives of our survey. And, you know, like if you want to bring in a, a straw person of cert, objectives, and then we react to it in a future meeting. That might be a good way to kind of keep things moving forward. And then once you say, okay, we agree, this is, you know, our, our goals for the survey. And then we can even, uh, from there say, okay, then these are kind of the approximate topics that we would have within that.
Okay, that's great. Uh, so, so, uh, for our next meeting, then I'll have, uh, some sort of, uh, a straw we can pick at, as it were, or build on, or whatever it is. Good, thank you. Okay, moving forward. Ideal town meeting. So, uh, what's a great town meeting? I, I think this is not the only time we're going to be talking about this. But I think, you know, what experiences stand out from what perspectives? How do we get the community to talk about what they think a great town meeting is? What can we think about? What, how, what can we measure in terms of great town meeting experience? And, you know, maybe it's easier to talk about what a bad town meeting is. And I think the, the stuff in the, in the blue, so, so, uh, I think, you know, I'm thinking about the experiences that we want as sort of our mission here. How we do that, uh, is vision, what, what ideas we have. And ultimately, we're going to, when we make a recommendation, we're going to be accountable as well for strategy. How would we get that done? The plans piece. And so, so I think, um, it's a challenger because I, I know that I think in terms of ideas and they have to go, why does that idea make sense? But, but we're talking about experiences and ideas together. I just, again, as sort of a straw, whatever. You know, what are the feelings of a great town meeting? These are things that came to mind for me. You have other things you're going to suggest. But efficient, right? We didn't waste any time. Effective, we got done what we needed to. We made the right decision on that. Enjoyable, it wasn't irritating. It was great to see everyone. Understandable, I was never confused. I was interesting, right? It was engaging. It's great to live in Concord. So these are things that surfaced for me. I don't know, you know, are these things that in a survey we go, do they, do you agree with that? You know, or, or do we talk, you know, I, so when I think about what a great town meeting could be, these things come to mind, right? And, you know, it could also, it's really easy to talk about a bad town meeting. So, um, but I think one thing it's that, that I'm interested in getting to is that in a solutions piece, and maybe this is too far ahead, is what is about what we do in town meeting, right? The procedures that we have, the information we publish versus what is it that we as people don't do? Right? The norms that we follow. And my intuition is that, you know, part of what makes a town meeting really good is both the architecture of the meeting, you know, and the information that we put in front of people. But also what we as individuals bring to meeting. The norms that we, the norms that we understand and follow. And that's again, that's squishy. So, so, but when we think about interventions and experience, that, you know, understanding what we can do and what we're relying on you to do, so to speak, seems to be really material. So, uh, Alice, I see your hand. Let me pause, please.
I just want to, you know, I make sure I, I want to acknowledge that this line of questioning, while it might be interesting to us, is already biased in its presentation. Ninety-five percent of the people in this community do not go to town meeting. You can only answer this, these questions if you attend town meeting because you have no idea how, what great is or what good is. But we've heard complaints. I just want to, you know, as as we move ahead to design something and we get trying to figure out the answers that we're trying to get.
Right.
Very skewed, narrow focus for only those who have attended town meeting.
So Alice, that's a great point. I just want to, I just want to bounce the ball back at you. And to say is that if people didn't think the town meeting sucked, would more show up? And so.
You're, I don't know if it's a qualifier, because if you've never gone, it's you have other reasons for not going. And we've heard lots of reasons that you go.
Yes.
May not be that it's terrible. Maybe you just don't want to. We can't, I don't go to football games because I don't want to.
Yeah.
Some people would choose football over town meeting.
Right.
And so as we talked about what are individual priorities and we talked a little bit as we, as you laid out in your, your PowerPoint, there are priorities and decisions that people make all the time about what they choose, best they are limited, non-working.
And Alice, what I would add to that, and that's, that's an interesting point, is I think when we started this, you know, kind of defining what we might mean by inclusive and stuff, and I think we even said everybody who wants to go, we want them to be able to go. I think that if people don't want to go, we, we're not going to, you know, move the needle on that. So I feel like we should kind of have a vision in mind for if you do want to go, what what would a good one look like, you know, what would be worth their time? And and so I feel like your list is good and I kind of picture it being on a Likert scale. And what would be interesting about that is you could see, well, everybody cared about it, or many people cared about it being efficient, but fewer people cared about X or something enjoyable or something. It would be, it would be interesting to see. So but Alice, you you've talked a lot about kind of representative. And I mean, are you feeling like? Are you feeling like we need to do more to engage people who haven't come in the past to try to motivate them to come as part of this process? Hold on, you're muted.
I guess I thought that was part of our mission, is how can we increase participation at town meeting or in town meeting? And that we, you know, we've looked at these numbers and said, well, five percent really isn't very high. That's ninety-five percent of people choose not to come. So I, maybe I've misunderstood that part of the mission, but it seemed like how we, what can we do to make it more accessible so that more people could come? But we don't understand really the things that they may just rather go to the football game.
Carmen, I see your hand, but I also recognize that Katie has a hard cap and so I'm going to go to her first and then back to you.
Sorry to jump the line, Carmen. I guess I think in terms of thinking about the people, there are people who want to come that can't come. And I think that might actually be a decent amount of people who want to come but can't come. So I don't think we're just catering to the people that, you know, are already attending. And by doing some of these positive changes and engaging with people who have these barriers, it will increase participation. As I think it's in line with the goals, but I agree, I don't know that we can change people's mind if they're just not interested. Anyway, over to you, Carmen.
Well, one, one quick response, though. Thank you, Katie, which is just that identifying who those people are and why they can't come, I think is actually an important piece of the survey, potentially.
I agree completely.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you. Carmen, please.
So that's the perfect segue for my thought, Eric, which is that would be really interesting to know why people don't come and whether they, they don't feel like they need, they're perfectly happy with how things are run in town. And, you know, not everybody who's a parent belongs to the Parent Teacher Association. You know, not everyone whose kids play sports belongs to the Boosters Association. Maybe they're just happy. And it does seem to be true that when people are unhappy, it's very motivating. And so it may in fact be that contentment is what keeps people away. And if if that's a kind of hypothesis, that it's actually, that yes, there's absolutely some segment of our town that isn't going because it's just hard. Or they aren't going because they've been, and you know, there's certain things they hate about it and they just can't abide. You know, I've certainly had people comment in surveys that, you know, can't you tell a person they've got to choose which issue they're going to talk on and not talk on every article? And, you know, so, you know, you get, you know, various kinds of of things like that. And you know that people are annoyed because things are repetitive. Or just because they're listening to someone who appears to be more interested in having an audience than actually contributing to the discussion. You know, I don't feel like we have a huge number of those people, but there's always some. So why aren't people coming? And wouldn't it be interesting to know and to be able to say that, well, it's true that only five percent of the people come. Maybe there's another five percent who'd really like to come and they don't because it's too hard. Or they don't because there's some aspect of the meeting that they don't like. But that, in fact, there's ninety percent of the people who are perfectly happy with how government is running and really glad and grateful to the people who are willing to show up and participate and vote. I don't know if that's true, but it might be.
All right, good. Thank you, Carmen. I guess we have to prove that, right? Katie, please.
Yeah, just maybe one final point. I agree. I think, I mean, I think there might be, there are people who really want to come, they can't come. There are people who maybe would like to come, and if we make it easy enough, they will say, hey, you know what? I think I'm going to go this year, and then we might get more people attending. So I think also keeping in mind the things that we can make, lower barriers to entry will be important as well.
Good, thank you. I'm going to go to the next slide. So so I made this up, all right? I I think that, you know, what's going on at town meeting? And so so I thought about, you know, of the people, by the people, for the people. And how do we quote unquote operationalize that right through town meeting? Or what what we're doing in public policy? And if you think about kind of the fundamentals of this process, allocating public resources, right? In a way that is determined by the interest of the majority, a majority vote, in a way that protects the dignity of the minority and that serves the interest of the whole. Right? So the interest of the whole is that judgment that we bake and that we make in sort of a civic basis, what's good for the town. And the dignity of the minority piece, to me, speaks to, you know, we have a process. I didn't get my way, but we had a process and I respect that process. And, you know, I I respect the process because I had a chance to participate, right? It was heard, I was respected, I was understood, I was considered. I didn't get my way, but we had a process that I respect. And, you know, going back to, you know, even what, you know, two hundred and fifty years ago, our our conquered forebears were, you know, they're striving not to be slaves to England, right? Is is what 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 I read in the Robert Gross book. The issue of dignity is fundamental to, or protecting dignity is fundamental, I believe, to the operation of democracy. And I think that part of why town meeting is important is because that is a mechanism for protecting people's dignity and in a community. I could be wrong about that, but following that line of thinking, right? Then essential meeting elements are the opportunity to speak up, the obligation to listen to each other, and and the moderated debate and norms for debate. And so to me, the thing that we haven't talked about is the obligation to listen. And that doesn't mean that I enjoy listening, but that people have a chance to be heard seems really important. And I just want to float that and see what people think about that.
I mean, I am all for it. I think I think it's one of the things, well, I don't know that it's changed substantially in the, you know, fifteen or so years that I've been going to town meetings. But it's certainly something that I've noticed lately is that that I don't, there's a different feel. And I think what a wonderful way to state it is, you know, this is my right to attend as a citizen, but my obligation or obligations is to, you know, listen and let other people be heard as I want to be heard as well. So I I am all for kind of looking at this kind of a little more broadly and saying, you know, yes, we want to make the process and the the attendance good, but then, you know, what are other, what are we all willing to do as well as as active participants?
Katie, thank you. Katie?
Yeah, I think this will be potentially a place where seeking feedback from the community might be useful. I actually think that people that don't attend regularly are single issue attendees. Maybe don't view it this way. Or at least the obligation to listen, at least what I've heard from feedback from talking to, you know, other people is people would like to vote and maybe the Australian ballot type idea is very appealing to folks who you can choose to listen. You can choose to not listen, but you can have your opinion heard on the issues with whatever preparation you do on your time is appealing to to some people, maybe a lot of people. And maybe that's a generational change. I don't know. But, yeah, I mean, I don't think that this is well understood by the community, which could be a source of some frustration with people who are not attendees.
Sure, I totally get you on that. Yeah, just to to put it differently, kumbaya. But but, you know, at the same time, I think it might, yeah. Other comments as well, please? Alice, how does this, how does this land with you?
Good conversation.
Cool. Right. Carmen, what, how, what are your impressions?
It makes a lot of sense to me. Also, I'll note that the One Town Lee, which just voted recently to return itself from a representative town meeting to an open town meeting. It it appears that the motivation in that town was that people felt that their voices were not being respected and that they did not feel like they were being heard and that, you know, I think a particular town decision, maybe it was a development or something, was kind of being foisted upon them that that they really didn't want, that a majority of the community really didn't want. And their reaction to this was to return to an open town meeting because they felt that they were not getting what they needed from their representatives and they wanted the opportunity to come and be heard individually. So that's kind of an interesting illustration of your hypothesis.
Yeah, good. Thank you. And just the the meta comment, right, is that that, you know, as part of the interventions that we streaked, that we seek to define for town meeting are, you know, so Carmen, one of the things I really like about your meetings, right? We stand up in the beginning, right? And you tell us how we're supposed to behave. And then we sit down. And I think it's really good. I really, really like that for a lot of different reasons. So but that that's a really clear norm that you're setting, all right, with the group, with you as the authority, as it were. And I think, you know, there are other ways to establish norms and to define norms. But I think knowing what norms are, you know, really helps, you know, that I know, all right? This is what I'm supposed to be doing and not supposed to be doing, right? I'm not supposed to be wasting people's time in a meeting, you know, or or whatever, right? There was, I'm trying to balance this and that. And I think, you know, a truth about town meeting is that it's a social experience, again, the people in the room. And that the question is, you know, in a way, it is part of the intrinsic value of town meeting, the that social experience. And when, again, you know, if and when we go to remote town meeting, what have we removed, right? Just so that we can multitask and vote. So I I don't know, but that's the philosophical point. I'll take just, I think if there's any public comment at this stage as well, welcome that. David Allen, hey.
Thanks, Eric. If I may say to this slide about democracy, amen. I am enormously appreciative. If I may bore down just a bit and try to put a fine point on where this goes. Many people don't understand that town meeting is a legislature. They don't see themselves as coming as a legislature. But in fact, if it's going to work well, effectively, and are governing ourselves, there's a learning that has to happen. Folks have to find out that that's what we're doing here. We are deliberating possible new laws that are going to be instituted. And now to really go down to a fine point, and you have it there on the slide, actually. What it's really about is deliberation. Yes, there's a vote at the end, and that's essential to establish what the majority is. But it's the back and forth of ideas, which is where your listening comes in. It's absolutely essential. And I certainly, Carmen and I have changed our votes as we've listened to the debate. Just to make a small example. And finally, this dignity for the minority. The essence is this, when you get to the vote and you don't prevail, and it will always be the case, some will get what they want in that article and others don't. The crucial pivot is for those who don't get what they want to say, this is democracy. Majority prevails. I accept the outcome and go forward. The extreme example, of course, is January sixth. You know, that's so prominent, you can't miss an example on the other side of this. But this can happen in micro or nano ways. People sitting grumbling in the audience, oh, this is a bad thing. No, a successful democracy is one in which people say we did what we needed to do, and it's because of all the things you've been laying out here in the process deliberation, listening, respecting and so forth. That vote then is a crucial turning point, which folks say, okay, I'm going to go on. I accept this and now this, maybe I'll prevail the next time. Went on a bit too much there, sorry, but.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let's fit this back together again. You know, we've been talking about what a good town meeting can be, a great town meeting can be. We've talked about some of these adjectives and and the potential of maybe others, potentially a Likert scale to see what people's attitudes are about for the folks who attend. I think Alice correctly pointed out, there's a lot of folks who don't go to town meeting and we'd like to know why they're not there. What are their, perhaps what are their preconceptions about town meeting? You know, I didn't go to, I'm pretty sure this is the case, but the Bottle Bill Town Meeting, one of them, I was like, ah, you know, I wasn't interested in that, right? Maybe I'm wrong about that, okay? But my, my, my judgment was that I wasn't really interested in going to that town meeting to hear about the bottle bill. So I didn't go. So so things, attitudes that we have outside of town meeting that we project on a town meeting are salient, I think, for why people don't come. And we want to explore that. You know, this slide is about what are we, what are we trying to sort of protect in effect? Or what what makes town meeting fundamentally work or fundamentally important? And Katie, who's had to step off, you know, I think said as well correctly that you know, the 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 public, which is what we're responsive to, may not actually care that much about having to listen because our minds are made up in issues and we just want to get the vote done. And I think that's a reality that we need to think about and potentially accommodate. So that, I think, you know, in terms of next steps for this, I think the this line of what a great town meeting is. One thing that I would like to do is go back and listen to the 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 COVID town meeting, the 2020 meeting, which Carmen has talked about as a really singular experience. And what was there, what was in that, what was not in that? And I think, you know, to 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 talk creatively about, you know, ideas around what what meeting can be that make the theatrical experience, I'll say, or the community experience of town meeting, is compliments to getting the job of legislation done. What, what? What, how does that, how could that potentially bring people in? How how important is that to the core experience of town meeting? I don't know, but I think I want to go back and learn, you know, to sort of see for myself what what was about, what what that, what was so nice about the 2020 meeting. Other action items that come to come to mind for this, for this piece of a great time meeting? Other action items that come to, come to mind for this, for this piece of a great time meeting?
I mean, the only, the thing I can think of is kind of like, oh, sorry, Carmen.
Go ahead, Kristen, then we'll go to Carmen.
I just think about kind of like a timeline, say, like, let's say we want to, you know, so that we can kind of work backwards and say, if we want to launch a poll by, you know, or a survey by this date, we want to have it reviewed by this date. We want the questions done by this day. So some sort of a timeline because, and I know September's not a hard and fast date, but I think it's a, a good, a good time. So a, a timeline for getting us there. And that way, we could take pieces of it if we wanted to, you know, write questions. If, if Katie or I need to block off time to kind of review them or things like that, we'll, we'll know when to expect that.
Thank you. Carmen, please.
So the, the one other aspect that maybe makes or could be part of a great town meeting would be that it feels like a, it feels like a fun community event. That, you know, this, this one, Henry Dane will say this often, that, you know, it, it kind of, there needs to be a food truck. There needs to be a party. There needs to be, and, and that was one of the things about our COVID experience was that it was outdoors in the sunshine and people were able to sit with their kids and, and enjoy beautiful weather and it, it just felt a little different. And there were, yeah, lots of things were being handed out, you know, face masks and hand sanitizer, you know? I mean, it was, so it was a very kind of central location for a lot of things. And, and it, it felt like, probably felt like a real community event also because we'd all been so separate and so cooped up and so Zoom fatigued that it was lovely to come together as a group, even though we all had to sit six feet apart. So.
Yeah.
That's my other thought.
That's interesting, Carmen. I mean, it's almost like there are three separate town meetings, you know, maybe they're three different nights, right? There, there's the, the, the one, the one you just talked about, the community event where, you know, where we're all together, we're enjoying being together, we're enjoying the fact that we're this, this really amazing community. And as well, perhaps that, you know, we're recognizing the honored citizen or, or, you know, we're getting to hear from, from, you know, somebody who's retiring. We're sort of recognizing the, the public administration piece of town and they're getting a chance to sort of present themselves a bit, right? So that's the, the sort of the conquered fair, right? The conquered government fair is, is a word piece of it. There's this other piece of, look, we've got the consent calendar to approve and we have all these, these specific financial approvals to get through. And we need to make sure that we do that. And there may not be a lot of debate about that. Maybe there are some things that we knew needed debate about, right? Because part of the approval might, might relate to approving a budget. But there's the hard business, right, of, of the approval stuff. And then there's stuff that, that the third meeting is about issues of, you know, I think it goes, speaks to town character. Or maybe it's capital investment, the things that we really, you know, where there may not be a priori consensus on, or where there's significant diversity of perspective on the issue where we really do need to talk about it, right? So I think that, that even though the Ellen Garrison vote turned out very strongly in one direction, I think that we needed to talk about that. So for example. And so, so I don't know if that means that we have, you know, the fun day for town meeting, the business night for town meeting and the real debate night for town meeting. I don't want to go there in terms of a solution, but we have these multiple identities, as it were, of meeting overlaid into one, you know, into one set of fixed periods. And so I don't know what the answer is and even what, what should prevail, but, but that, that's what I hear. So. Yeah, Kristen, please.
And I would, I would just suggest, and I, I, I understand kind of the breakdown and how you say that. I guess I would suggest that the community aspect and the communal aspect and the social aspect could then in turn, and hopefully help us to have more productive and civil debate, I guess. So I, I, I don't want to necessarily see them separated. And I know that's not what you're suggesting, but, but you're right. They, we have all these elements that we need to, you know, take care of and, and they are related.
Alice, I'm going to give you an opportunity just to weigh in.
I'm just going to say that for me, one of the aha moments was framed by Carmen. That I really liked the idea that contentment as a determinant of participation. And if we get that sort of out there, that's part of community building, I think. That concept that not everybody wants to participate if they think everything's going pretty well. And as long as we all understand that, that's a pretty okay place to be. I really like that, that framework. Thanks, Carmen.
Phil, I'm going to give you an opportunity because it's, so you're agreeing with Alice, please.
No, I, I concur. Great discussion.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go to the public. Any public comment here? David Allen, please.
Are we completing, Eric, or?
Yeah, we're going to, we're wrapping up this issue and we're closing the meeting. Yeah.
If I might, to tease apart a couple of pieces, it's in the email, which I suspect is at the end of the slide deck here. It got sent after the last meeting. In simple words, town meeting works legislatively if it's representative. End of statement. This push for more people at town meeting does not relate to whether or not town meeting does the job that it needs to do. If it's representative, if the point of view representing broadly across Concord, then five percent is perfectly fine. I've pointed out that in Lexington, the max number that's allowed is two hundred and three folks, but it's representative. But on the other side of it, and let me now borrow, if I might, Alice's analogy, the football, football game. I don't go to football games either. Why is that? Because I'm not interested. I don't want to do it. Why would I do it? There are a lot of other things, of course. Democracy unfortunately doesn't work, however, if you're not interested. Because democracy is all about the citizens governing themselves. And what that gets us to is a question that's come up several times in the discussion here. So, and Alice herself has, I believe, allied with the notion that the committee looks at this question of increasing engagement. Now, does this mean you want twelve thousand people at town meeting? I don't think so. Leave that off to the side for a moment. What I want to suggest quite strongly, separate these two things, representativeness on the one hand, and on the other hand, folks not engaging because they don't understand they live in a democracy where democracy is not a spectator sport. Enough said.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Well, I've got through the agenda. Do we have anything else to talk about today? I think not. We'll meet again, our, our subcommittee will meet again in two weeks. I don't know what day that is. We'll figure it out. I think action points from today's meeting begin to sketch out a, a survey and what we want to get from it. I'll take that. I think Katie will take a look at, well, we'll hear more from Cory about what we can do with the data sets that we have access to. And I think we'll see if Katie has any insights that we can sort of bring this stuff from ten years ago up to date with respect to the distribution of, of ages for voting and not voting. With that then, I will say thank you to everyone. Carmen, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we do have the copy of the survey that the ninety-six committee used. Does, does anybody, if you need that, let me know and I can make sure that you get it. I think it may be in the appendices that are attached to the report that are in our form.
We'll loop back on that. I think, thank you. Good to know. All right. With that, I'll say thank you and I will declare our meeting concluded. Thank you, Shannon. And thank you, everyone. All right. Good afternoon.
Thank you.